Wednesday, May 25th, it is now for 40, and I call this meeting to order, and I ask Clerk Oswald to take over.
I'll get there. I got a brand new box from the water pump. Here we go. Member Edger is excused. And Member Kirby?
Here.
Member Lockwood here.
Here.
Chair Local?
Here.
Member Oswald?
Here I am.
Member Siewinski?
Here.
Member Sandholm?
Here.
Superintendent Magus?
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Erickson?
Here.
HR Director Severn?
Here.
And I believe everybody else is excused.
Thank you, Clerk Oswald. And we are here tonight on a committee of the whole, and it's a meeting on our budget. So thank you all for being here. And again, the only agenda item is number three, the fiscal year 2022-23 update. And so our presenter is CFO Erickson, so thank you.
Thank you all. Each person should have a paper copy of the handout for tonight. Oh, I'm sorry. Superintendent Magus wanted to make a... Sorry, sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry, I get so excited.
No problem.
Me too.
No, I just wanted to say, I know that tonight is a meeting focused on budget. But we also have heavy things on our mind related to the recent school shooting yesterday in Lubalvi, Texas, that involved the murder and death of 19 students as well as multiple adults. So as we think about our priorities and think about our budgeting, we know that learning and safety of students are very critical. And I want to thank the board for their previous work in recognition of the National Gun Violence Protection Day that is coming up this next weekend. And I know that in future meetings, you'll be considering resolution to continue that. And I know that we did so last year, so it continues for now. I just want to say thank you for the support that you've given. As we think about what we need to do after an event like this, you know, it's hard to find the words. But I think it's important for us to reaffirm safety and continue to look at our safety protocols and continue to make improvements in those areas. It's also important to take our loved ones in close and make time to talk with them and really think about where are people's levels of mental health and concern and make sure that we're taking breaks from the news if maybe. So we just wanted to focus for a moment to let people know that we were thinking about those students and families and staff members and community members in Texas. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank Superintendent Magus as well as Assistant Superintendent Anthony Bonds for getting out the email to families and staff right away this afternoon and providing resources and some thoughts from us as a district. And so really appreciated that. And I look forward to us passing that resolution and recognizing National Gun Violence Awareness Day the first Friday in June. So thank you.
Thank you.
Just letting that sink in a little bit, and we're all in a hurry to do work. And then we know it's important to just take just a bit. Then I'll turn it over to Supreme Clerk Erickson.
A little emotional.
Yeah. I am reflecting on that too, as I sit here and sign diplomas, knowing that those... It's not right.
It was hard to send the kids on the bus this morning. I was thinking about all the other parents in the districts as well. Probably the... The heart and the fear that they...
Thank you.
I am appreciative of the opportunity we can spend together again tonight. As a reminder, we've had a couple of discussions about the budget. We will have another discussion about the budget in June. Depending on what happens with our legislative session, which is still in flux right now, we may call for an additional special meeting if we find out that there could be changes that we're not prepared for. That's what happened to us last year. I think we had all hoped we were going to see a regular term in this year of the legislature. But we're still waiting on items related to our entire state. But particularly, there were some pretty significant considerations for education that did not find their way to the governor's desk at this point. So it may be in the district's best interest to follow up if we should see a successful special session where there is some new information to be shared. What we'll be sharing again tonight is what we know based on current law. We have not made any speculation on what we think may or may not happen. But know that we'll have some discussion on some of the potential opportunities that we would have. The first thing I have to do is let you know that there's a few typos that I see that I made. So I'm going to have you look at the very top row that says preliminary 22 budget. That should be a 23 budget. I worked on a sheet that this cover title wasn't showing up, so that's why I didn't correct those. So this is May 25th, 2022, and this is for the fiscal '23 budget that must be adopted by June 30th, 2022. And then from this point forward, I think I have all the dates and years correct. So just wanted to... And we'll correct that. We'll use the same version at our June committee of the whole, and we'll get those updated. So sometimes in your best efforts to try to make something consistent so that it looks similar to last year, it looks identical to last year because those dates were actually last year. So we'll get those updated. This is going to be slight... There's going to be some components here that we've already discussed, but then there's some new items that we're going to talk about tonight. Especially, I want to focus on some of our other funds besides the general fund. But because the general fund is such a large component of our operating district budget, I'm going to highlight a few extra things tonight as well. So just to make sure that... And you see the summary, the preliminary draft of the funds. Here, I'm going to kind of dig into each one of those, but as an overview, I just want to share. And we had this in our last... Right now, this is the operational budget without investment of ESER funds. We know that ESER funds are going to play a significant part in the 2023 budget to keep us moving forward just generally operational. But then also at our last committee of the whole, we spent quite a bit of time talking about those additional investments that we're using ESER funds for in the 2023 school year. So we're going to compile all of those into one larger document. But for now, I just want to remind folks, when you see that negative $4.4 million deficit being shown in the general fund, we are at this point committing approximately $4.4 million of funds to make that right. So that will help balance our budget. And we saw that, and we'll see that here a few pages back. New to us tonight, we'll be talking about the other funds, our food service fund, our community service fund, our construction fund, which we will be talking a little bit more about that at our next meeting, and we'll be putting some costs related there. Our debt service fund. We have a small trust fund, an internal service fund, which is our dental fund. And then our student activities that we will spend a little bit more time talking about. And I know we've talked about it several times during this past school year and before because we have had that transition from having those be external managed funds at the sites where then we were required by the Department of Education to roll those into our budget. We wanted to break those out still so folks could see where those dollars are. But keeping in mind that those are actually part of our general fund. Those are a part of our general fund, and that's required by the Department of Education. One thing I added here too, and this was what we've been talking about since fiscal year '21 and really even prior to that, are kind of our budget goals that we continue to have for ourselves as we go through the process. And of course, the number one goal that we continue to have is to strive for fiscal stability. Several years ago, when I first came to the district, the board revised the fund balance policy to 8% of our operating expenditures in the general fund. And we continue to strive to grow that fund balance. And I'm very happy to say that since I arrived here into the public schools since 2018, we have grown the fund balance to just shy of $3.9 million, where we had started without using student activity funds, which are generally dedicated. We would have actually been in a negative general operating fund balance. So that $3.9 million is actually freed up from our student activity balances. We are keeping those per new regulations as a separate line item, and they all have their own reserve. So I'm really proud of the work this district has done, the initiation of some really great conversations with the board and to give our leadership direction to make sure that we continue to strive for that fund balance growth and fiscal stability.
Can I just ask you to explain that again?
Because when you came in 2018, didn't we only have like $250,000?
So there was $399,000 showing up. But of that 399, 1.3 million represented student activity funds.
Oh, I did.
So we were actually in the negative of $1 million with just the regular operational without student activity. So the way it was built before, that student activity kind of cushioned the actual reality of where the district was by having those dollars kind of represent the general fund. But they weren't ever to be used for operational funds. So does that make sense? So as we think about the fund balance and the reasonable growth we had the first year in 2019, and then we had a little bit of growth in 2020, and then 2021 gave us an opportunity to see a fund balance growth partially because we were able to use some of our ESER dollars to offset some of the things we had. We also had several delayed projects in our long-term facilities maintenance. We've talked about how supply chain and timing issues and being able to find people was another part in which we have some funds that are sitting and some timing issues of how we're going to spend some of those down over time. Our second budget goal is just to align with our district goals and strategies. And again, we continue to build off of a base budget from at least when I arrived here in 2018 that was built on having meetings with program directors, building administrators, CITs, administration, and other priority budgets. So, you know, the building of the base of our budget, and we know that the majority of our budget is people and have contractual obligations to it. But the people that are being funded, the programs that are being funded, is part of a longer line of choices that the district has made and commitments that the district has made over time. That doesn't mean we don't have great conversations about where we need to continue to go. And that's going to be one of the important things that I think the strategic plan will help us continue on those directions and working with our teams as we move farther on.
Did I ask the question too?
Yeah.
So is that where you would see the, especially the strategic plan, where the school board also has in their vision when they're helping develop the strategic plan of what... Because it says program directors, building administrators, CIT administration. I don't know where school board fits in as far as what our priorities and visions are for helping establish a budget.
Absolutely. So part of the strategic plan, the budget is the development of the goals, strategies, and priorities, and the actions that the board takes. So there is... It's embedded in everything we do as we hear from what are things you want to approve? What are things that the superintendent and others bring forward? Ultimately, it is the recommendation of this body to bring forward to the board what is the recommendation to move forward. But certainly engaging with the superintendent through administrative dialogue, using the strategic plan and the yearly checkup in governance and priorities that the board wants to see is how then the superintendent and our team take all that information back to build kind of the details behind what the budget is. Does that help?
Oh, perfect. Yeah, thank you. And again, I think as we move forward as a board too and look and help with our strategic plan that we have that vision as well, that it's a reflection of our values as we project our concerns on budget as well. Thank you.
Superintendent, did you want to...
As we continue to learn.
Just a brief thing. So then, the under goal number one, where it says fiscal year '22, that again would be '23 as well, right?
Yes.
Sorry.
Nope.
And then I was also thinking, are these prioritized in order?
No.
Because, you know, I was thinking in some ways, alignment of a budget with district goals may... You know, of course, we want to have fiscal stability, and we want to make sure... So that I see them almost as parallel, right there?
Yeah. And they weren't in any order other than I numbered them just to differentiate.
Just was curious. Thank you.
And I think, you know, all of the things when we narrowed it down to four, there's probably 20 variables we could choose. And we did try to just give a highlighted view for the board to understand kind of the baseline of how ideas, plans, projects, departments turn into those dollars that turn into the budget. And I think the utilize revenues effectively goal is also making sure that we use the best use of our funds. We know that we have some funds that are pretty limitless. They can be used for just about any eligible public purpose. There's always that overriding public purpose when we say, can you use this for anything? Nope, not anything. It has to follow statute. It has to follow public purpose. But then we move into those more restricted funds that have more rules, more attachments to them, more limits to what those can be used for. And we want to make sure that we are using those to fidelity and making sure that we're aware and that we're using those best use of funds when we can. And I will say that our departments and teams have been really good about that. And unfortunately for us, for the last couple of years, one of our sources, one of our larger restricted sources of funds being compensatory has caused us to actually not be able to do as much as we would have otherwise had we been receiving the funds we had had before. And it just so happens in alignment with that, here comes ESER that is really backfilling that bigger gap. And if you remember from last year, the current year that we're in right now, we had a $1.4 million loss of compensatory just in this year, just for those dollars. And the commitment that the board made and the recommendation that came last year was that we would try to broaden our district with the operational budget we had in 2020 before the pandemic really flourished and became a part of us. And we continued that same process into 2023 with that same knowing we still have a gap. We still have work to do to balance that budget. And now as we're phasing out of ESER, then we're going to have to have larger conversations of how do we meet the goals to strive for fiscal stability and meet our goals and priorities that the district's going to be setting in the coming year for the '23, '24 school year and beyond. So always kind of putting a plug in to remember that we won't be able to maintain the same type of budget we have today moving forward when the ESER slash ARP investments have been expended. So thinking about that, and our hopes and goals are maybe we get some more money from the legislature. Maybe we continue to see re-enrollment of our students. So that would be a great thing for us to continue to strive for. But we will be monitoring those closely and making sure that we feel when we need to have that awareness of maybe having to realign some of our costs because of where we work our way backwards from revenues. So everybody feel good about that so far. And then finally, program-based budget layers. This was just a area, and you'll see it when we talk about those program areas within our expenditure graph that you'll see again for maybe the third time. But it's great to be reminded. Those program areas that we have... Some areas we have more or less control over. But for example, I'll use special education as one of those areas in which due to the complexity and some of the requirements for special education, we may be forced to spend dollars, more dollars, or spend them in a different way based on the guidelines, rules, statutes, and of course, our IEPs or individualized education plans for our students. So thinking about that model and sometimes thinking about, without us knowing, you know, another example would be our benefit cost. When an unexpected rise in health insurance comes along, we have to cover those costs. So then as we build in what we learned, that then makes us have to consider the other things in order to help us balance the budget. So when we think about that program-based budget layers, we try to look at those things that are not necessarily controlled by us but are controlled either by the market or by other rules and regulations that we aren't able to shy away from. So that's just thinking about those pieces, and those are just a couple of several examples we could share. Any other questions on kind of the first page overview of the whole budget? I'm going to talk through each one of those budgets. You're going to see a couple... Well, you're going to see mostly all negative numbers, the difference between our revenues and expenditures. And I'll talk a little bit more about those when we get to those individual charts. So I'm going to scroll to the second page. This is something you've seen multiple times. Just as a reminder, the general fund is our largest fund. So this is, we are projecting on the revenue side of the general fund, which includes general operations, transportation, and our operating capital, including our long-term facilities maintenance and capital project areas. So those three funds pulled together are our consideration of our general fund. And we are projecting just a little over $113.6 million at this time, not including ESER. So wanting to make that clear, this would be an operational budget that we would have if we weren't being also subsidized by our ESER funds. Just as a reminder, we are building in the 2% on the basic allowance from the legislature from a year ago. So the biennium happened last year, and they had already committed to an additional 2%. We got 2.4% this year. We got 2% coming into fiscal year '23. I know we remain hopeful that we may see some movement by the legislature, but right now, we're not projecting a higher amount. And also, if you remember, we are also budgeting at 79, 85, 7,985 adjusted average daily memberships, or ADS. Yep.
So that's the same numbers we went over a week ago, last time?
And the last time.
Yeah. And so is that a... An optimistic number or is it a conservative number? How do we phrase that?
I hope it's a conservative number. Right now, in the May... I guess I haven't looked at May today. But at our April, our May school board business services meeting, we had, remember, we had adjusted our adjusted average daily membership down from 8180, which is what we budgeted, to 8,005. And as of last month, we were at 8,006. So that feels like that might be about where we're going to land here for the end of the school year. And so we went just slightly conservative. And again, as we discussed last time, we know we have some additional non-public opportunities coming within our district lines in the fall. And we hope that more students will continue to re-enroll, and we'll see some general enrollment trends. I'll show some of those as well. But as of right now, for budgeting and revenue purposes, we're budgeting right about where we think we are right now. Does that help? Does that help?
Yeah, that helps. So is there a date and time where our building administrators kind of give you an ending your...
Yep. So we've been...
Their predictions? Because I mean, they hear from the community, or they get parents coming to them and...
Yep. So we... So head count and class size are different than the enrollment number that we're using right now. And so we have met with principals two times, plus we've done some individual conversations with principals just in the last two weeks. And those estimates that you're seeing on the sheets have been the estimates that we're working with our building principals on for the fall and the just the traditional elementary and secondary, what we're sharing right now. It's more complex with our online program and our ALC because of the volatility. But we are working on looking at those trends. The pandemic hurt that enrollment quite a bit because students didn't need to enroll in our online school because everybody was online. So we saw a pretty large drop in that dedicated online school just because students didn't have to take those courses through that separate entity. They could do them themselves. Yep.
But there's actually starting to see...
The yes.
The turnaround because of teacher shortages in other districts where...
For sure.
Where we become the math department for a neighboring district or somewhere else around the state.
Yeah, I did talk with...
Which is a common or a new phenomenon.
Yeah, I talked with Principal Goldie about that last week. He shared some concepts that are happening there. And we're actually going to work looking at how we can make sure we're getting the maximum amount of enrollment. When you go from school to school and use the MDE system, we can actually lose a little bit of enrollment. But if we do a direct tuition agreement with the neighboring school district that might be looking for that service, we could actually work with them to hold. It's kind of a win-win to work on that. And I've been familiar with working on that with post-secondary. So between post-secondary and online, I think we're going to try to work hard to see how we can maximize that revenue there. So we're looking forward to that.
Thank you.
We are again looking at the majority of our general fund coming from our state sources, as a reminder, and our local sources mostly include our levy. So that green part of the pie is mostly our levy limitation certification in the general fund. If you think about the levy overall, and you think about, you know, it's a little over $40 million. Over half of that is debt service, and we'll talk about that tonight. And then the other half, a little over $1 million is community service. And we're going to talk about clean service tonight. And then the remainder is just the general fund. A lot of that is our operating referendum revenue because that part of that comes from our taxpayers, some of our operating capital, our local optional revenues, our lease levies and others are leaviable items in this general fund. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. Just want to pause to see... I've been told that if you hear it so many times, it starts to sink in. So this may be the third time you've seen this chart. So you might be dreaming about it or putting it on your refrigerator as something that's a great reminder. And then just as a general reminder, in the general fund, we do not receive a very large portion of our budget from federal. I think that we hear a lot of information about federal funds and how we use those areas of funding. But it is a reminder that anytime we can advocate and engage our national representatives to provide more funding to our local school districts, the better off we can be. So it's really a relatively small amount overall in the general fund to cover those. And again, the major components of that are federal special education and our federal title programs. We do get a small amount of federal American Indian money and then some other small individual grants. So I'm going to press pause before we go to the next page. Great. The next page is a little bit different than what you saw in our last meeting and just wanted to break down the undesigned. We kind of had a big pot. If you remember the last, it looked like $96 million, which was a lot of money. But of that $96 million, even though these funds are not restricted, they are identified differently, so we wanted to share that with you just to give you a little bit further breakdown. So of our undesigned, we have about $68 million that we consider could be spent on any public purpose driven by the approved budget by the board. We get about $5.7 million of federal programs. So if you think about our federal dollars just as a process piece, we have to spend the money first and get reimbursed. So we have to put in a proposal. We have to put in an application. We have to say how we want to do it. Then we spend money, and then our great friend Simone, she will go out and do draws from the program so that we can receive those reimbursement dollars. So we do not carry any fund balances of federal dollars because we don't get to get them in advance. We get them as a reimbursement of front-loading and spending those dollars first. So we're aware of carryover funds, but we don't hold them in our accounts because we don't have access to them until we spend them. Does that make sense for federal? Very common in a lot of municipal governments, cities, counties, programs, that it comes later rather than getting metered payments, and we stick them in a bank account to be spent later.
But do you know how much federal money is we've got that they're going to give us?
And so we make sure we're using all of that money? We try. And sometimes we do strategically carryover funds if we know that a program or a change in... if we know that a program or a change in what's going to happen in a specific area will have a carryover. One of the things about federal programming is we get estimated budgets, but then they're also adjusted during the school year. So oftentimes we'll budget for a small carryover so that in the event that we wouldn't get as much money, that we don't overspend or end up having to use our general fund to offset those. Because, for example, if we code $2 million to federal title and we only get 1.8 million, we've spent 2 million, but that means 200,000 of the general fund has to cover that because we won't get reimbursed the full amount.
A follow-up to that. Can you, can you just, you, you highlighted a few, and this might just be helpful for some of our new members. Is other federal programs, you mentioned title. Can you just kind of give a little laundry list of what falls underneath that?
And I would, I don't want to say that this is going to be inclusive of everything right off the top of my head. And I can happily give you all of our sources and uses of federal funds. But in addition, we do have McKinney-Minto, which is homeless. That's a component piece of our title programming. The titles, the title programs mostly have a focus on students who need extra help, extra learning. But we have a component piece, especially in Title II, that can focus on professional development and technology. So the title programs overarching are mostly for making sure that we provide extra services for those students who have needs. As I talked about, we do get a little bit of what they call Impact Aid, which is for American Indian. That's a direct to us from the federal government. Both the title program and federal special education are what they call flow-through funds. They actually are allocated to the state of Minnesota. The state of Minnesota keeps a share of it for the administration and operation of those programs. And then they flow that out to what we, we're the local education agency, or LEA. They are the State Education Association, or the SCA. So we're the LEAs. And the Department of Education provides a, a person, a support person in the title program area. So when either the program director or Simone or someone has a question, we have a regional person at the state level that can help us make sure that we're spending the money correctly in case we need to do an amendment to our application. If we have any questions related to back years and doing reconciliations, they're a good person to talk to about that. And then our federal special education has both, all the way from birth to '21. So there is a range of special education. We have the birth to, then we have our early learners. And then we have basically what we call the Federal 419 Fund, which is basically kind of the general regular school year, traditional student cost that we get. Keeping in mind that both the title programs and federal special education are dependent on our percentage of pre-reduced lunch count as a component. That's not the only factor in the formula, but that is a factor in our formula. So keeping in mind that as we're seeing some fluctuation in our eligible pre-reduced lunch counts, that will affect both of those funds. Another fund that you won't see here, because we don't get it as actual revenue, we get it as discount, is E-Rates. You may have heard about the E-Rate Program. It's a telecommunications component piece that Bart Smith manages in our Technology Department. And so E-Rate is a federal application. We actually utilize services from the Arrowhead Regional Computing Consortium, or ARC. They provide regional support in the application process. And so when we have eligible things like, for example, a firewall, if it's eligible for E-Rate funding, what we actually pay for it may get discounted by our application and our eligibility. So we have to pay less than the market value. So again, we don't actually receive the revenue. That comes as a discount and we just pay less. And so that is funded, that's a national program throughout the country. But we do that regionally through ARC as our support. Any other questions, Member Lockwood? Did I do an okay job?
That was great.
Just, just a quick question. So the main difference between restricted reserve is that it needs to have allocation within the reserve fund balance?
It has to have its own fund balance.
So even though the other programs listed there are not under the category of restricted, there oftentimes are many restrictions to the-
How we use them, yes. It's just that they don't have to have a reserve fund balance account.
Right.
And again, these are not, these were just highlighted ones. We have many, many other small component pieces. I just wanted to kind of give a, a general overview. Also, remember that special education on the state level is a reimbursement of expenditures. It isn't a qualitative, we get so much per pupil or so much per program. They take all of our eligible expenditures and those that qualify, they do a calculation and say, you're going to get this X percent back in reimbursable. So sometimes we call funding sources like compensatory as a categorical because it uses a baseline pupil count or a baseline enrollment count to make that. But special education is also technically a reimbursement of eligible expenditures. One thing I did want to note on medical assistance, it, it is, you may have also heard of it called third-party billing. So students who are a part of the medical assistance program through the Department of Health or DHS, they can, if they are having qualifying services here in the school district, which is oftentimes related to nursing or nursing cares or some of the physical therapy or other qualifying procedures here at the district, we can do a time study and submit those to the Department of Health and we'll get reimbursed for those costs. Medical assistance during the pandemic, obviously, we were not able to do as many services for students because they weren't here. So this past year, we, in fiscal year '21, I believe, we received around 450,000, where the year before we were closer to 800,000. We budgeted 600,000 this year. And in working with Angela Sepp, we think we're going to outpace that this year. So that's why we're budgeting approximately 700,000. So we don't think we're quite back to where we were before. But we're hoping to continue to see medical assistance move forward. There is, there is an opportunity in state statute to allow for the district to let parents know who have regular health insurance that they could claim services and we could get health insurance rebates from families not through DHS. It is very rare because most often that will in fact, impact their insurance premiums if they make claims against their health insurance. So while districts are able to do that, if you were to look at the statewide analysis of who collects those dollars, it's very, very few districts who are able to do that, even though there is an opportunity. So these are really targeted towards students who are in the medical assistance program or MA program in the state. We do have to get permission. So we do have someone in our special services office that when we get students and we find that they are eligible for medical assistance, we must, we must get parental permission in order for us to build DHS. So we do have people here in the district who do that work. Yeah.
I guess just before we move on, I, I want to back up to transportation.
Yeah.
Is that, where, where's that revenue coming from? And is anybody talking about this in terms of this is something that needs to be looked at for all districts across the state?
Yeah, so transportation, there is no such thing as a transportation fund anymore for schools. Embedded in the basic allowance is what used to be the transportation allowance. They calculate it at about 4.85% of the basic allowance, they say is earmarked for transportation costs. There's also a component piece on our general education revenue called transportation sparsity. It is a calculation that, again, has no requirement to spend it on transportation, but it looks, it looks at the square miles of the district related to how many students are in the district. And it uses, it is one of the best, most complicated calculations you're going to see on the levy limitation. I think it uses square roots of things to figure out this amount. And so that additional dollar amount is there as well. The third component of transportation would be the special education component of transportation. We are allowed to record all of our eligible special education costs. So we do have special education routes that are targeted for just our special education students. We're allowed to spend dollars on special-equipped buses for special education. And then we can turn those in to the state as part of our eligible reimbursement. A misconception about special education transportation is that MBE may say at times that it's fully covered or fully reimbursed. Not necessarily the case because when we have a cap on the reimbursement, it's one or the other, right? So if we were, if we had eligible costs of $25 million, but we only are going to get 14 million in exchange, we might be crashing a ceiling. So we don't necessarily always get that as a fully reimbursed amount. So those three components are how we look at transportation. We, as a school district, use a Fund III locally. The state does not recognize a transportation fund. So we have to roll everything into the general fund or Fund I. To your point, there was, two years ago, St. Louis County School District was the district who triggered an additional special, or a transportation excess cost. And they were able to utilize their square miles, their number of students and how many miles to get some additional reimbursement. The people that worked on it used the calculation to make sure St. Louis County got money and many other districts did not get money. It was under review this year to expand that calculation to get more districts to get more dollars, and it didn't go anywhere. So there is a component piece for transportation excess costs that is a calculation that we currently do not qualify for, but would be going to advocate for that. So as the cost of transportation goes up, which of course we know fuel cost is going to be one of those factors and areas, we will have to use our general fund if, when we calculate kind of that designated transportation revenue, we are required to provide our services. And from there, we would be using the general fund to backfill, similar to what we do with special education that cross-subsidies. So maybe someday the legislature will make us do a transportation cross-subsidy to show that different, different amount. Did that help answer your question?
I don't know if I'm more confused or not.
Oh!
No, that, that, that does help. I think we all need to understand that it's, it's complex. And again, on top of all the other reasons we need our legislature to come back together, you could throw this one on there too.
For sure.
It's, it's going to be a, a mess for a lot of districts going into next fall.
Yep.
If it's not, if it's not addressed.
And to, to clarify, for purchasing of school buses, we do almost all of that through our operating capital. And we have used some of our ESR dollars last year to cover the cost of buses. So that doesn't usually come out of the transportation fund. We are also eligible to use federal special education money for special education-specific buses. We haven't been doing that recently because we've been using some of our federal dollars for those room remodels, both at Lincoln Park and Deadfield now this coming year. But we may start pooling that back to get those funds. And then if you remember, a couple of months ago, I shared, we did have a special education bus that we had hoped to replace, but we found out it was going to take so long to get the replacement bus. We did that engine replacement. So it ended up costing us $10,000, which we are trying to apply to see if we can use federal reimbursement funds for that. So we'll be working on that as well. Did that help?
No, thank you.
Okay. And as you guys are thinking, and sometimes I know that it's exciting to think about all this all the time like I do. If you have a thought later on, feel free to send me an email or give me a call. And I'd be happy to follow up if there's like more thoughts you have after we go through this. Because I do realize after the fact, after every meeting, I think, oh my gosh, I threw a lot at everything. So I know it can take time to process.
Yeah, I have a quick question about the, you were talking about some of the federal reimbursable-
Yes.
And how sometimes we're not reimbursed fully. I'm just curious, just very briefly, like how, like how often does that happen? And like that makes me think of how we've built up our fund balance. That's really good that we have that cushion.
Yes.
You know, for that. And I'm just wondering how-
In, in say, our largest component of special, or of federal revenue would be our special education. We do budget anywhere between 250,000 to maybe 400,000 of carryover. Some years, we spend it after the year has started because we have that unexpected. The first time we did the Lincoln Park bathroom remodel, we knew we had carryover funds and that's how we used it because we had actually fully budgeted our current year and then were able to use some of those funds. We had some timing issues in a past year where we had thought we were going to use some dollars. Like, for example, we hadn't, we did not start the Deadfield bathroom. I think that's going to happen this summer. So we had budgeted it this year. So that's going to be a carryover into next year. So we'll use carryover funds to pay that so we can continue to use that. Title, title is, can vary. Sometimes as the buildings make their plans and Darren Sheldon, who coordinates that, kind of has an overview budget. We're only allowed to carry over 10% or 15% of- 15%. In Title I, every three years, you can ask for a waiver to carry more than that over. So that one does require you to spend so much. So we try to keep within that 15%. Sometimes it goes down to 10%. Sometimes we carry over that 15%. But oftentimes, like I said, we'll make decisions once the school year has started, once we have a better sense of how many dollars there are available. Did that help?
Yeah, it does. Are there requirements for when that rollover need to be spent?
Yes.
Probably depends on each pool you don't need to be-
Yep, so it's, it's kind of funky. What we do is we, we spend the carryover first and then we'll carry over new money. So we never are carrying over old money. So it's kind of a first-in, first-out-
Yeah.
Process for all the federal funds. Thank you.
And as we, as we go forward, with every one of these that you're explaining to all of us and answering our questions, I know that there are people behind this, you know, these that are maintaining our-
Yes.
You know, reimbursables or they are keeping a lid on wherever spent monies are. And I just, I think of all of you sitting in the offices we've got. And I, I know that times we, we actually want to budget and we want to not cut for in front of the students. We want our budget to reflect, you know, our, but oh my gosh, for every one of all of this financial stuff, we know that you guys are, are carrying the load back there, making sure that we are doing the reimbursable party billing and we are following, taking the monies out of the right pots and spending the, the, the older money first and carrying over. So, oh my gosh.
I will say that-
You guys are smart.
The joy of spreadsheets-
We are fortunate.
For those that appreciate a spreadsheet, and I know there's several people in this room that have the joy of spreadsheets. We have many. We are also very appreciative of the opportunities that we're going to use to continue to grow using our Skyward software. It's relatively new to us still. And we've had a lot of turnover in our departments recently for the past two years. So we're kind of retraining up a bunch of people. But that software system is going to provide us a lot of tools and opportunity to do some of that tracking and make sure that people feel like they have an understanding and an awareness. I know we've talked several times and we'll talk about the student activities. Sometimes I think it feels like, because they used to have it at their site and there used to be like a, a green ledger book that had all that information and now it's in our system. Everybody getting acclimated to using our system is maybe a little daunting. And so Simone has done a fantastic job. She's gone to every building at least two times in the past year to meet with the clerical and the principal, activities directors and others to make sure that they get a sense of where that information is. I know it's still maybe a little bit disconnected for some folks. And that's why Simone is such a great resource. And she will answer the phone anytime to make sure that folks understand. Because that $1.3 million of student activity accounts is all over the district. And so there's a lot of people managing and touching those funds. So we want to make sure they know where they are, how they can use them, and making sure those processes are a little bit more streamlined and making sure that as we get audited by the state and others that we can show that we're doing the right thing with that. Because if you remember, we're a year behind every other district. We got, we got a waiver permission because of our software that they let us go one year later before we converted to the student activity accounts. And Simone has done a fantastic job, so.
I would echo that as well. Any improvements in system structure and data accuracy? Thank you, Simone.
Is that, are we at 5:30 already? Yeah, okay. So I want to make sure I get to some of the highlights because most of this you've already seen before. And I just want to scroll down to the bottom of where we had that budget comparison. And you see the note in red. I just wanted, as a reminder, where we are at this point right now does not include those general ESR ARP backfilling funds to help us get to a balanced budget. to help us get to a balanced budget in the operational fund. And then there's also the additional investments of ESR that are over the top. And that's what we talked about at our last meeting. That document's out on Board Book now. So if others are looking at that, but we're going to build that into kind of the whole package budget as we kind of come together one more time or possibly two more times if the legislature is still working towards that. But just as a reminder, this is what, this is what our budget situation would look like as of right now, doing all the things we intend to keep doing and not having ESR funds. So that ESR is really important for us to make sure that we can continue to provide the program services and staff going into fiscal year '23 that are basically the same as what we had pre-pandemic at the end of fiscal year '20, going into fiscal year '21. So I'm going to scroll down to.
So that, so that 16, 1621, that should also say FY.
22. Yep.
22.
Thank you.
And it's ESR that's covering that?
Yes.
Thank you.
And remember FY '22 is showing as if they didn't get ESR either. And we are backfilling this year with between three and four million. We won't know what that number is until after the fiscal year is over. And then just at the very bottom of that page, just as a reminder, LTFM was the biggest reason why our levy increased on the page 20 levy for this coming year. I'm going to scroll down to my, one of my favorite charts, which you've seen multiple times. As a reminder, on the expenditure side, here's where we're seeing those funds, which include all of our general funds. So again, this is that general fund budget, remembering that the majority of our dollars are spent in our elementary and secondary regular instruction programs. So that's that 200 series. And I'm hoping Brett, my assistant, went to a Ufar's training yesterday, a virtual training all day. So that's that string of numbers that you get that you have to put on an invoice or a voucher to get paid. And so these numbers are magical numbers to the school finance people. And so when I look at elementary and secondary instruction, I relate that to what we call the 200 series. And as a reminder, our second highest area, again, which really is a focus on students is our special education instruction. So you take those two main components and those would be the two largest component pieces of our budget. And again, since we've talked about that before, I'm going to keep scrolling down and talk about, again, putting some of our preliminary budget considerations on the expenditure side. I'm going to scroll down to that bottom, which is what you saw last time, which is using what we believe is our initial revenues for this coming year without ESR, which is that 113.6. We are planning to invest 400,000 of ESR investments. We also have those assigned revenues that we're going to plan on spending some of those down for timing issues and others where we have some money set aside from fiscal year '21. We'll use some of those funds to help that 400,000. And that will get us to a relatively balanced budget with the investment of ESR and some of our assigned fund balances, not our unreserved, undesignedated, but some of our assigned fund balances. So.
Was the ESR investment 4 million or 400?
4 million. And if we get more revenue, if we get more students to enroll, if the legislature does something different, that number could potentially get smaller. And that could mean then we could repurpose those ESR dollars for other purposes. So keeping in mind that the remainder of ESR III, and I have a little sheet here at the end, we have until September 30th, 2024. But we've front loaded the majority of our dollars to have us kind of phasing out by the end of this next school year. So we will have some unencumbered dollars, but we see those as kind of, again, I, I'm not sure where we are today, but a few weeks ago when we met, we had been hearing that there might be another variant of, of COVID and other things.
Uncoordinated.
We felt it was very important to keep some of our funds unencumbered should we need additional PPE or if we needed to have other issues related to the effects of a future wave of the pandemic. So we do have some of those funds and know that we have plenty of one-time things we can spend those dollars on towards the end of the life, the time life, blended learning, technology, devices, some of our capital and other equipment areas. So it won't be a concern for us to be able to expend those dollars. But we utilize a lot of those dollars based on the priorities that have been discussed here with the board and through the work of the superintendent with our community groups, our departments and making sure that our stakeholders were part of surveys that created that priority list.
So if our ESR dollars goes, if we're using that 4 million to help balance our budget here for '23, how much is left in the bank, so to speak? For, cause it doesn't all come at once anyway.
Right.
So for '24, '25.
So at the end of everything right now, we spend everything we've encumbered or said we'd like to spend. We have about 1.9 million dollars currently unbudgeted. Now that's, there's a big variance for what we think here. There could be another million dollars. If we get an additional million dollars from the legislature, then we would have another million dollars that we think we could spend on other things. So right now, based on what we would say is the worst case scenario of all the things we might need, being slightly conservative on our enrollment, we think we have about a little over 1.9 million. If you remember that sheet we had last time, it's way at the bottom of that sheet.
I got it.
Yep.
Um, I'm, I'm guessing that other districts are finding themselves in the same situation. I don't, I don't know the answer to this, but so is this a common situation for school districts across the state or the area?
Yeah.
To, to kind of use these ESR funds to backfill and or meet needs.
ESR is actually, yeah, ESR is actually uncommon. There are not two districts that are doing the same thing and nor are there two districts that got the exact amount of money.
Right.
As we talked about last time we met and we looked at the comparison of a district that's almost exactly the same size as us, they're getting $5 million of ESR and we're getting $30 million of ESR. And it all has to do with the pre-reduced lunch calculation. So our demographic gave us way more money than other districts similar in size to us. On the flip side of that, districts who even had higher may have received more, but a lot of our smaller districts around us didn't get nearly the amount of money that we did. And for those districts who didn't have a great HVAC system, a lot of districts invested almost all of their ESR into their facilities and not on people at all.
I, I would say some districts took a strategy of considering this as, as completely extra spending. And they cut staff and cut in other areas and then they utilized this as kind of add-on services. One thing that we tried to do in putting money back in the budget was actually recognizing that, you know, the staff we have and the teachers we have are already a really good, a really great intervention. And we didn't want to lower our class, or I'm sorry, increase the class size ratios and then add new types of positions. We thought it was best to invest the money, or at least for 4 million dollars, much of it going towards staff because we wanted to put it towards staffing, knowing that if we increased the staff to put towards something else, we would just result in worse results. So we wanted to make sure that we took care of the basics first, which rather than add twice as many interventionists, but cut the, cut the teachers and increase the class size.
These are really great questions because if you look at every individual district, they have their own story and they have their own priorities. You know, we of course were not a district that was one-to-one. We invested a lot of our money in devices. And other districts who already were one-to-one were able to use their ESR funds in a different way because they didn't need to do the initial purchasing that we had to do. And again, we're so fortunate that the calculation allowed us to have a higher level of funding than other districts, maybe similar in size or similar in utilization of how they were going to use their funds. So I think we had great thoughtful conversation. I hope you felt that last year too, as we came forward with the recommendation not to cut staff. Because I know one of our neighbors here up in the region, I believe Grand Rapids is doing some pretty serious staff reductions in their district this coming year. And they've already announced for the year after that. And they also received ESR funds, but they knew that their overall budget sustainability was being challenged. And so we're seeing districts all across the state doing staff reductions, FTE reductions and budget reductions, even in the midst of still carrying some ESR funds.
And I just want to support that too and maybe share it for the community that will listen is that, you know, that was a, you know, a plan and a vision with our administrative team that the board supported to put dollars in our current staff, our current train staff, our current professionals, people who know, knew our students and know our community. And, and that in and of itself, when sometimes we hear some criticism like we didn't put ESR monies in, into our children, we didn't put it in front of the students, that we spent it in other ways. And that simply is a narrative that isn't supported by our data and it's not supported by what we know as a board happened. It's really kind of a spin on, you know, there's people who don't always love hearing or love tapping into our video of all of our meetings and seeing all the conversations we, we have. They just go by what they hear. So it's, it's a, it's an opportunity for us here today too, to remind our public that we did make an effort, a, a, a successful effort to keep our staff that we know are the best for our kids in front of our kids. And it didn't go to, you know, other, I mean, we tried to spread it to what we needed, technology and, but so good.
Thanks. If you think about the logic behind 80% of our budget is people, 80% of that 4 million dollars went to people, basically. So if you use that as an analogy.
Um, I'm, I, I appreciate what we're doing. I want to express that I'm very optimistic about this, even though this is going to be a pessimistic question. Okay. Um, projecting to next year, not, but fiscal year '24, since we're in plus, you know, putting the cash in there, the extra cash, does that mean that for the following year, we're going to have to cut 4 million dollars from the budget?
So if all things stay the same, the answer is yes. Do we hope that we'll continue to see education from our legislature? Do we hope to see that we'll see reenrollments that get us back to the place we were before the pandemic? Yes. But if all things stay the same, and that's been that fiscal cliff we keep talking about, and I know the superintendent and assistant superintendent are tired of me inserting that in about every meeting that we're in. But I, I know that our principals, our administrators have heard this multiple times. We've been very intentional. I know our HR team, when we posted ESR positions, they say temporary. So there, there is an awareness that these are our temporary positions. But in addition to that 4 million, that, those are things that are just backfilling that aren't, that aren't necessarily positions that we're going to have to address. So.
So correct me if I'm wrong. If, if, if there's a 1.9 million carryover, it would be 2 million.
Correct.
Thereabouts.
For sure. If, if that's how we decide.
Eventually it's going to catch up.
Yeah, but yeah.
Eventually.
There's work in that.
And I would say jokingly, like we joke about, you know, Anthony and others, and I don't care about the fiscal cliff, but we, we all. Right, we all know, we all know that, that there is this impending circumstance that's going to hit us, which is part of the reason why we wanted to make sure that we didn't spend every dime of ESR this year, partly because of the potential for unseen, unforeseen safety needs. But also it might provide a tiny bit of a cushion for some of those, those reductions. I would also say that some, some of the expenditures that we're doing right now are, you know, unfortunately intentionally time targeted, like, like having interventionists to help with recovery of learning loss. Now unfortunately, this past year, some of those expenditures weren't really as fully utilized towards their intended purpose because they were called into subbing and other things like that. But there are some things that were, that are like intentionally built in for, for phase out. But would we, would we prefer to have that funding as a constant? Heck yeah. Right? But I think that we would definitely be in a much worse financial situation, you know, even if we looked at our fund balance, if we had not had ESR for the past couple of years.
Sure, and, and I understand that, um, being, you know, one of the older members on the board, I, I always have in the back of my mind those difficult decisions that we had to, have had to make in the past of, of budget cuts and budget cuts and budget cuts. And those are never pretty and never fun. And so, you know, this, the pandemic's almost been a relief. And, and, and yet, you know, I have that little nagging voice in the back of my head of, of, you know, can we get kids the learning they need to get caught up just to take those things away that, that is good data and good science and good, um, good help for their education? And then we have to pull it back because we don't have the money. That is what, what may hurt. But then again, I'm, I would be very thankful that those things that have, had happened and increased their learning too. And yet, it would just give us more ammunition to go to the legislature. And, you know, maybe the Minnesota Legislature could just say, well, let's, let's just keep replacing what ESR gave us. Yeah, we can afford that, but. You know, I mean, that, that would be, you know, to have this funding permanently put into our, into our budget would be life-changing for many kids.
And, and even with this funding, we still feel that we have many unmet needs. We have, we have to say no to many things every day that are really great ideas, that are, that are really best for kids, but we aren't able to say yes. So really we've, we've been working on beginning the process of really analyzing our expenditures to think about what is the return on investment for some of the programming that we have? So that when, when it comes time to consider what reductions we need to make, we'll have a better, a better framework at least to, to not, it won't be just a gut feel of, I like this program or this program's not my favorite. We have to base our decisions in data. And then also as we finish the strategic plan, there may need to be a shift or reallocation of resource if there is something that the community and board and others feel is a priority over something else. So that's, that's part of why we're trying to, I, I, I really am grateful for the team and the work that we're doing related to trying to get this, this flexibility.
The, the last nugget I'll leave for pondering, which is a, a huge investment that we will definitely have to be considering is our technology. We were able to purchase, but in order for us to be sustainable, we have on average 2 to 4 million dollars per year that we currently do not have in our regular operational budget that ESR has been able to support the purchase of both devices. But more importantly, infrastructure. I love meeting with Bart Smith, our technology manager. He's amazing. And he reminded me today, he goes, if you're worried about this, if you're worried about your Chromebook or your device, you're not even seeing the scope of the investments that we have to have. All of the hotspots, the, the little boxes are all district-wide are going to have to be replaced within the next few years. And I can't speak at all eloquently to the details related to technology, but Bart says that we have to replace all of our switches. So if you know what that is, I don't, I, it's a magical thing behind the scenes. That's most likely going to be 2 to 3 million dollars. So just in those two things alone, and if you remember many conversations we've had here as a district about what they, the district called their interim technology plan, which was basically an unfunded plan about the basic technology services that we had. And then keeping in mind that we've invested in people to help support all of the additional over, at this point in time, I think we've purchased almost 7,000 devices. We have more devices than staff and students right now throughout the district, but also realizing that the amount of repurchasing that we have to do, the cost of repairing devices, actually it turns out that replacing them is cheaper than trying to get some of them fixed when they're in deeper disrepair. So having that extra replacement budget is going to be really critical. So as we think about the long-term viability of blended learning and how is that shaping and moving into our day-to-day regular classrooms and our regular curriculum, what are we really going to need to move forward? So that's going to be a really important conversation we're going to have to continue to have in relation to technology. And that's really not built in here because that's all being paid by ESR right now. But eventually we're going to need to have a larger component budget that addresses technology.
Who has a friend at Google or Elon Musk doesn't like Twitter? It's less than us.
It's going to be, going to be some. It's going to be, going to be some really important questions that we'll have to walk through. I want to move to some of our other funds that we haven't yet talked about. And they're very important funds, even though they might not be as large as our regular general fund. I do want to make sure that you have at least an overview and a sense of understanding of some of the other important funds we have. And the first one we want to talk about is food service. So food nutrition or the food service is what we call Fund Two. It is designated by the Department of Education and by statute that it must be a completely separate fund. So it is tracked and monitored and recorded in our audit as a separate fund. So it is not melded into the general fund. Generally speaking, the food service fund should not have any more than approximately three months operating costs in their fund balance. It's not meant to grow a giant fund balance. We get reviewed yearly. And if you are growing a fund balance, for example, they would want you to either lower the prices of your food or utilize it for capital expenditures. And those have to be approved by the Department of Education. So we have maintained within our area. We did see a slight drop in our fund balance last year. We are projecting a higher reduction in our fund balance coming into this year because we believe that there's going to be higher cost of food. We believe that we are maybe, we, we hope to be bringing back our à la cartes. One of the things I wanted to share with you for fiscal year twenty-one was that we missed out on almost a million dollars of local revenue because we were not allowed to have à la carte because of the USDA free lunch requirement. We had to provide the free lunches and we weren't able to do supplemental lines. And because most of our kids weren't in school, we also didn't get to turn in as many lunches because they didn't take them. We didn't service as many students. So we weren't able to get the highest level of reimbursement that we would have had in the past. So we were able to, to keep a fairly stable, we were able to adjust really well. But as we are now transitioning back, I know in the legislature this year, they had talked about the state maybe providing free lunches for everyone. As of today, that is not the case. So we would be going back to our traditional, if you're not a free or reduced lunch student, then we would be going back to paying for our lunch and having maybe more opportunities. As you've heard in our business services and our monthly report from our nutrition director, in order for us to be as successful as we can, we are going to need to fill a lot of our vacancies. We do have a lot of food service vacancies. We're working with our H R teams and others to look at recruitment and ways in which we can get those staff back. So, but overall, I just wanted to share with you that you can see that we're projecting a little bit more expenditures, partly due to our contractual settlements. And then also the additional higher cost of food. I'm trying to think if it was two years ago now where we actually had a food service provider. We lost our contract, we had the bid and we had to go with another company, which ended up costing us more money. So as we go through those processes, right now, our contractors, Upper Lakes Foods, they've been great to work with. But again, as you probably heard throughout the year, we've had supply chain issues. Everybody's favorite things like chicken nuggets and other things, we had some issues. And I know a member eater had shared with us that her son wanted to lodge a complaint that we didn't have favorite foods all the time. But we continue to experience that and our team is doing a great job of trying to maintain that. But overall, we are seeing a increase. I did add for food service, but not the others, the fiscal year twenty-one final, just so you could see how much less we spent and then how much less revenue we received for fiscal year twenty-one. And then underneath the pie or the, the little two graphs there, you can see that we're projecting slightly or almost equal revenue compared to 2022. But you can see that where we think we're going to get the money is going to change. For this current year, we're getting almost all of our money in federal because again, this is a free, this is a free lunch year. So all of our reimbursement is coming from the federal government. Next year, we believe that we'll be going back to the regular pre-reduced lunch. And then that local would be the student cost of people paying for their own lunches or utilizing the à la carte services.
With the amount of vacancies that we've had, did we actually save money in that fund?
We, we saved some costs, but overall, we had all of our staff working even when we were in the pandemic. So it, it basically netted each other out.
And are we going to have to pass any resolutions raising the prices at once?
As of right now, it doesn't look like we have to raise the price of lunch. It looks like we'll be able to maintain right now based on the fund balance that we have. But we'll be having some discussions with Sheila Oak, our food nutrition manager, to see if she's going to make those recommendations.
And are we going to be able to bring back the free vegetable, all meat, you know, carrots and celery sticks?
Yes. Other, other, back to our old processes where this, and I hope everybody realizes how hard this was on our food nutrition team. We just were following the rules set up by the USDA and the things we wanted to do and the things we wanted to provide. Many of those things we were not able to do because we had pretty strict guidelines by the USDA of how we could manage those things. And Sheila Oak and Betsy and her team did a fantastic job trying to manage and wading through all those complexities. So overall, for food service, we'll continue to look at that and we'll be looking at it in progress. I just want to note that you can see that for the food service budget, the majority of our money is spent on food. It's not on people. So that purple C there is our supplies and materials. That's the four hundred series, but that's where most of our food is. Food, milk, bread, others inside of there and some of our general supplies. And then you can see salary and wages is the blue. And then the benefits that go along with those salaries are in the yellow. So you can see that approximately forty-seven percent of our budget is people. And then forty-nine percent, and then we have some smaller capital expenditures and some smaller contracted services. Again, for this coming year for the budget, again, we're projecting about sixty-five percent federal coming from USDA, thirty percent local, which would be those user fees or paid costs. And then, actually, this is interesting for us. The state of Minnesota provides very little in terms of food service revenue. They know the USDA is the main provider, so the state has always provided less. So there are just five percent of our food service budget comes from the state. I want to say, and I wish I had it in front of me, but it's like, I can remember in past years, we'd get like twelve cents per meal from the state. It was a very small amount of money because they knew that the recipients of the USDA were covering the cost of those. Any questions on food service? So again, overall, this budget is around four million dollars per year. We're carrying just slightly under, around nine hundred thousand dollars in that fund balance. If you scroll, I'm going to hope I don't give people motion sickness. When I scroll all the way back up to the top, you can see currently we're projecting a fund balance decline of four hundred and forty-two thousand. But we believe that when we hear more information from USDA and we'll be able to increase some of our local revenue projections, that we'll get closer to a balanced budget. But because we have money in our fund balance, we'll be able to sustain if there are higher food costs. Going to scroll back down. And then we're going to talk briefly about community service. So Fund Four is our community service budget. I'm not sure what comes to mind when you think about community service. I, for all the years I've been in school finance, the first thing that comes to mind is somebody going, oh, who can take the underwater basket weaving class? They always use that as kind of that funny, you know, anecdote to, what can you take at community education? But community education or the community service fund is, is wide-ranging. We have a lot of services provided within our community service budget. So just wanting to remind you, there's the traditional community education. Those are the courses, the catalogs that you see, the things that we provide for opportunities for our community and for our students to participate. We have ECFE or the Early Childhood Family Education that actually runs as a community education department that's not in our regular fund. That's per statute that runs through community education. We also have our preschool and childcare through our community education. So preschool includes our school readiness. It also includes our general preschool. And then for Duluth Public Schools, which is unique in Minnesota, is that we also have Head Start running through our community service Fund Four. In most areas throughout the state, Head Start is run as a separate entity and it often runs through an area agency or an AEOA or partners through a county or through an extension service. But for Duluth Public Schools, and I, I don't really know a lot about the history of how Duluth embedded it into our programs, but there's about two point four million of the eight point six million that's related to just strictly Head Start. And that is a federally funded program through Fund Four. So those, that is another major component of that. We also have what they call school age care inside of our after-school daycare program, which is Key Zone. Key Zone runs through community service, but it is a partnership with the YMCA. So even though we have it within our system, we use a partnership with them where they hire people, we pay them. And then after all the expenses are paid off versus how much revenue we receive for the fees associated with that, then the district and the Ys split the difference. And that's how we keep the program going from year to year. So we have just a small group now of district staff that support that program, but most of the majority of the staff now are with the, with the YMCA. And then school age care is a levy that allows us to levy for supports for students with special needs that might be in an after-school program. So we do levy each year approximately ninety thousand dollars through that to help provide paraprofessionals or other supports with students who happen to be in an after-school program. You can see that from a revenue side, it's about a third, a third and a third local user cost, federal programming, which again, the majority of those federal dollars are paying for Head Start. And then we do get state allocation. So there's both levy and aid associated with community education. And that's actually based on district population, not student counts. So that general community service calculation is based on the population of the district. You can see on the expenditure side, the majority of community service is people. And the majority, a lot of the people are certified staff because both our ECFE and our Head Start program have certified teachers. And then some of our support programs also hire certified staff. So a lot of these people are certified. And then we do have supportive paraprofessionals that are part of that service as well.
I know we just had a presentation.
Yeah.
Our adult basic ed, but is this where they?
They are also, yes.
They also like our, our BRID program and our T twenty-one program?
Yes.
All under community service?
T twenty-one is special education, I believe. I don't think that runs through here. That would walk through our special education. But Andy Frank and her, she's about a half a million dollars of this total budget is our adult basic education. You can again see that we are projecting a current deficit spending in community service. One area that we lost revenue in is community service received the revenues for booking the use of our facilities after school hours. And because of the pandemic and because of our current situation and not having enough service staff to service a lot of extra activities in our buildings, which have, have been focused mostly on the secondary, middle school and high school buildings, they weren't able to generate as much revenue. And then also, when we were in the pandemic, they didn't have as many catalog programs. They didn't, they tried to do a lot of things virtually, but they did overall see a loss of revenue because they just weren't able to provide as many programs as they had in the past.
Did, did we step up with S R money or did the state do something specific for community service and community ed?
The state did not do anything. We, as a school district, supported Key Zone. Because if you remember, when we started the pandemic, Key Zone supported us doing the free childcare. They still had to pay all their Y staff, so we used S R funds to help offset the cost of the Y staff to help manage that program when we weren't allowed to generate revenue off of those students because we had to provide the free childcare all last year. So we did that and utilized S R funds to keep that balanced.
Is there a certain percentage of this budget that averages, that pays for the underwater basket weaving?
I'd have to look at that. It's a relatively small budget that would go for the regular community education. And most of those programs use their user fees to pay the difference. So I can, I can get that catalog amount. And Simone works with that team. And as Assistant Superintendent Bonds is aware, we are in the process of trying to hire a new, I was just going to ask.
Coordinator.
Yeah. Jay Rosser did retire. He's on his thirty day. He's not allowed to work another job to initiate his retirement. And we're hoping maybe we can tap into him as we transition to a new person. Any other questions on community service? Again, double, above double the budget of our food service, but still a really important fund. Really engaged in our community, has ripple effects all over the community as we do different progressive services throughout the district.
I'm not sure that the community is aware exactly of this fund when they talk about the budget. So, because I mean, this is truly where our community is engaged within our schools and programming and how we support our community. And, and that is vital to how we thrive within our, our settings. And it's really important. So.
Yep.
I hope that we, I thank you for, for signal, for singling this out and making sure that our, our people are aware.
Yeah, thank you. And, and it runs the gamut in different communities. Some are very active and engaged and use a lot of, of activities. And others are relatively small and just do the basic services and maybe don't do as much because they have other active groups or other organizations within their community. But I would say that seeing what we do here through our community education, we do a lot of good things in our community and provide a lot of services. So I think it's a great investment that community service. One of my personal favorites, the debt service fund. Only because it was when I first started doing presentation work, I presented on debt service. So I have a, have a history of that. This is probably one of the most straightforward ones we have. This is the bonded general obligation bonds that we have that we have to pay each year. We receive levy and aid proceeds to pay off our annual debt service. For those of you that have been on the board for a little while, we have refunded every possible general obligation bond we have now. So we are getting the lowest interest rate that we possibly could. I know prior to me coming here, there had been a few refundings, but we did some really good work. I'm so proud of our financial advisor, working with R W Baird and that team, working with former school member Trinka, who was the chair of business services. She really helped advocate for us to do some refunding to make sure. And especially when we kind of did some of that restructuring to make sure that we can keep our levies stable. So I'm, I'm really grateful for the work that we have done here. You're going to note that our overall debt service payments are going up. And this has to do with the restructuring of some of our bonds. This wasn't that there was some big additional amount that we put on, but we had restructured a lot of that debt service. And then if you recall, we did do the L T F M bonds. Those aren't actually getting paid yet. Those are a future structure to pay off those future bonds. But to keep us stable, we have this additional change. And then you can note at the bottom that we are also receiving less revenue than we did last year by approximately one point seven million dollars. And you might be saying, oh, my goodness, we're in deficit spending. What's happening here, and we talked about it briefly in Truth and Taxation back in December, is that we have a debt excess penalty happening here right now for our district. This is a calculation triggered by the Department of Education. We are only allowed to carry five percent of our principal and interest payments in our fund balance. And because of our refundings and because of the timing of when we've received money and having to pay different bonds, we accumulated more money in our debt service fund balance than we were able to keep. So the state automatically does a deduct on us to force us to spend down our fund balance. So they aren't giving us as much levy authority as we normally would have gotten in order for us to spend out, to force us to spend out the fund balance. So this happens about every two years, sometimes every year for larger districts, depending on when they do refundings or other things. We also have the opportunity to levy for five percent more than our principal and interest because just in case. because just in case not everybody pays their taxes, we need to have enough money to pay our obligations. So over time, your fund balance will grow. So it's not a bad thing to get a debt excess adjustment. They call it a penalty. I should call it an adjustment because that makes it sound like you did something wrong. We have not done anything wrong. It is just the right sizing to make sure that we're not keeping taxpayer dollars that were levied for a specific purpose and then didn't need to use them during that time. So this is a predefined calculation, and you'll see it on the levy limitation.
So is that going directly to pay down?
Debt, yep.
So it's additional payments to the debt?
It is actually...
Like a homeowner might pay additional payments on their mortgage, something along that line?
Correct, yes, yes. So basically, we, in a prior fiscal year, we got too much money from taxpayers compared to what we needed to pay for our debt service. So now the state's saying, hey, use that money. You don't need to levy as much this time around because you've got money in your fund balance. So it is something that they trigger, and they do, and you see it on our levy. So it is a planned fund balance round. And again, if you think about our overall debt service versus our whole budget, this is approximately $24.6 million coming forward, and that's approximately a little more than half of our levy. So when we think about that levy, which is about 40 million, about 24 million will be related to our debt service. But again, a smaller component of the larger 113 million we spent on operations. You can see that almost all of the money is local. We do get some what they call LTFM aid. We have a state guarantee on LTFM, and because we have the bonds that we're paying, we have about 9% coming from the state and the rest coming from our taxpayers. Just going to briefly talk about that we do have a trust fund. It's a very small amount of expenditures and revenues. We set aside a certain percentage of our federal funds, and this sits in a small trust, and we use this to offset some of our benefits payments through our processes each year. So this is basically a flow-through in and out of money that we set aside, and then we use it for employee benefits because of our federal, some of our federal funds run through a trust, and then we pay them right back out of the trust. We also have an internal service fund or Fund 20, and we are self-insured dental. And Simone and I visited earlier today. Right now, we're budgeting approximately $924,000 of expenditures to provide and accept dollars for our dental program. Some of it's covered by the district, and then we have a share of premiums that's shared if people want a higher or expanded dental program. And again, we assess this each year, and if we are growing our fund balance, we will lower the premiums because this is not a fund that's supposed to make money. It can carry a small fund balance to make sure in case there's some unforeseen claims that we're not prepared for. But overall, it is just supposed to be maintaining, and so we are self-insured. Our benefits team here in the district reviews that each year and then makes a recommendation whether or not we're going to change our premiums. And then just briefly, wanted to talk about the student activity funds. This again is approximately $1.3 million of all of the different funds we have available. Because we don't know how the student activity fund is going to get spent each year, we budget it as if it's going to spend all its money, but we know we carry quite a bit of money in our fund balances. And that's another thing that we want to make sure that board members know and the community knows is that those are carryovers. So if there is a student activity account that raises $5,000 and they only spend $3,000, they will have $2,000 to start out the next year. We don't take that away. We don't reshuffle it to someone else. If it's designated, they receipt it. They all have their own accounts now, and we follow through on all of those to make sure that those are carryovers. So I just want people to be aware that, Simone, they spent a lot of time converting those local kind of handwritten or managed funds, and now they're all within our system. We did have several schools condense some dormit funds that they were carrying that no one was ever spending those dollars with and kind of went into a general student activity account managed by the building. So all of those things have been processed. We have met with all of the building principals. It is their responsibility to meet with all of their people and activities and departments that have those things. But I know Simone has talked with different groups within the district that may have had some specific questions about some of their areas. But I just want you to know that we do keep track of them all separate. It's why we have Skyward. It's why we have a system so that we can make sure we do that. We test those expenditures versus what they're receiving in revenue, and they'll all be carrying those fund balances. One thing we will do probably after this year, once we get through ESAR, is to make sure that people understand that student activity accounts that are run by the students for the students shouldn't be generating money without a purpose. They should be having a purpose to their funds and shouldn't just be generating revenue to sit on it. They should have a purpose of why they might be doing a fundraiser, or they might be getting a grant, or they might be getting something that we shouldn't be just collecting for the sake of collecting. And that was one of the things where we kind of went through it right now is to make sure that people knew how much money they had. So if they needed to start expending those, that they should. Remember Lockwood him?
Yeah, a couple quick, were you done presenting?
Yes.
I'm sorry. A couple of things. One is having four kids who went through the schools. I don't know any of the kids that weren't earning money to spend money for something specific. And down to the penny pocket. But my other question, though, with this is, is this where if kids need scholarship money for different things, that it's built into this activity fund in some ways, or does that vary?
No, I don't know. Simone, do you want to speak to that? So we do have activity accounts within our general fund that are not student activity accounts, where if we have a policy where, for example, we are giving a scholarship, or if students don't have funds, we have policies related to that, we would be using the general fund. There has to be public purpose. Like, for example, you can't use the money and then give it away to another organization. You have, there are specific rules. There's what they call the MAPPA guide. That's the Student Activity Account guideline. So there has to be a public purpose for all of those different things, and you can't just give like something to a student, for example. There has to be a policy related to equity and making sure that we're following through on that. So we have district policies where we may be providing district funds for that. But student activity should really be student-focused, student-aided. And like you said, most all of them are fundraising for a trip or an event or a program if they're purchasing equipment to do some local event. But that's mostly the focus. Does that help answer your question?
Sure.
Did I do okay?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
So on this topic,
Yeah.
booster clubs and how does that work?
Yeah.
So we can understand the difference and how they're separated.
Yes, thank you for that great question. I think there is sometimes a misconception. And before the state of Minnesota, and I believe it was the Attorney General's Office did a state overview of student activity accounts, there were a lot of boosters inside of school districts, and they were all removed. One of the guiding principles about student activity accounts, they say it's by the students for the students. Booster clubs are managed by adults, and so they cannot be a part of our student activity account. They need to be a separate organization. Now, many boosters will donate to the school district for specific things. Like we know, for example, many school districts, the booster clubs might be the upgrade from a school bus to a coach bus. They might be the group that's raising money so that they can get new uniforms, maybe new equipment. Just like any donation that we receive, if they give us the intentionality, we write that down, and as you as board members accept those, that becomes a part of it. In certain cases, booster clubs may do the purchases themselves and then just donate the item. They may buy 100 basketballs rather than giving us the money and us buying the basketballs. They may receive the basketballs and then provide those as a donation as well. So others do direct buy. So like in our case, we do have one where the upgrade, they pay Voyager Bus directly rather than it running through our system. But we're made aware of all of those processes so we know who's paying what for each of those things. So boosters are a completely separate entity. Depending on the activity and level of activity of the club, it can be very significant or it could be little. If you think about our lacrosse, for example, here in Duluth Public Schools, there was an agreement before the district took on that additional sport that they were going to create a group, and they were going to contribute X amount in order to make that sport successful, and they have maintained doing that every year. So sometimes they're built based on a purpose to make sure that we can do things. And then others are just community spirit where they want to provide extra enhancements, or they realize that maybe the district isn't going to be able to afford all of the things they want to do, and then we see those as donations.
And so I just want to make sure that the district has no control over booster clubs' budgets or anything like that, and that, you know, I'm thinking in terms of hockey, we have no, we have no control over how much they charge their parents or raise and any discrepancies between east and west or anything like that. So that's all private and not, we don't have any control.
Right. The district does have a booster policy. We do have it on our website. I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared for the question. I don't have it right here with me. But we do actually have a policy that does request that every booster provide us with an estimated budget that we know, at least to the level of what they're choosing to contribute to the district so that we can be aware. Certainly, they could be doing things on their own for an activity outside of the school year. For example, maybe there's a summer tournament that they want kids that are in a sport to go to. They may raise funds and do that all on their own as an outside support that isn't running through the school district at all. But then it could be as something as they've agreed to buy the new uniform, so they let us know as a district that they're going to be fundraising or providing the actual uniform or the funds to buy those. Yep.
Is there a state watchdog or agency that keeps an eye on booster clubs?
On the Minnesota Department of Revenue, the State Auditor's Office, I think there's a lot of groups that follow those and monitor those just to make sure that they're doing the right thing.
Do we require that they must be nonprofit?
I can't, I'd have to look at the policy. Go ahead. That's okay. I just wanted to say that a booster organization does go through a process, an application process. There's a president, a secretary, a treasurer, and they have their own rules to follow. They have to get their own tax ID number. So they stay completely separate from us in that sense. And yes, they do have, like Kathy said, someone that oversees them. But, you know, they can be a valuable resource as well to support any of the clubs and whatnot.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. Thank you for that. And I think, you know, many of us have been very active with our kids' variety of things and their booster clubs. And, you know, and my earlier question about scholarships, I know there's many booster clubs that
Yes.
do many things to make sure all kids who want to participate can participate and that as well. So I think there are many valuables that's across our city as well. So, you know, and I know there are rules to follow in that, and many of them do. They want to be doing the right thing, people who are leading those groups.
And keep in mind, we also have things like foundations. I think booster clubs, you hear that as a common, but we have other ways to receive funds besides an official booster club. There could just be a local organization that wants to provide for our athletic department. They don't have to be a booster club to provide resources and support to us. So just keep that in mind that foundations or other groups, local businesses, oftentimes you'll see a local business donating to a specific activity or athletic department activity. We can get those as well. They don't have to be funneled through a booster club. Other question?
Yeah. So my question is just, do we give, does our district supply money? So and we know that, I mean, we certainly supply coaching stipends and that, but is our activities more or less funding their own activity by their ticket sales and their revenue? I mean, we've got these figures, but how much of it is really district money? And how much of it is generated by ticket sales? And do ticket sales and event sales go right back to the school and the activity that generated?
So Duluth Public Schools has a very unique current allocation process in which how those funds are being managed. Even though they're all district funds, some of them had been maintained at the local site level, and then there were certain responsibilities of, say, the activities director to fund or pay for. And then there was a district amount that was utilized for, say, mostly for staffing. But all of our departments, all of our activities have supply budgets and other things, and not every activity has a way to generate revenue. You know, for example, I don't, and I'm just throwing this out because I don't think the golf team, you don't pay to go watch a golfer. You don't have a concession stand, but they still need those costs, unlike hockey who has gate receipts. But then we also have a very significant lease payment that we have to make to pay for the ice arena that we pay for. So Simone and I, our goal for the next year was to do that. One of the first things we did when we reset up our activity accounts, this is different than student activities. This is embedded in the general fund. When you have a separate group who's raising money for a specific thing, that's a student activity. But then we have our inside-of-the-district activity accounts, which are athletics, our debate, our speech, and all those things. We've created codes for each individual sport or department, which for whatever reason, Duluth did not do that. Now we have all those, so we can actually show by activity how much we're taking in and how much we're expending. So after this year, we should be able to provide the board a quarterly and yearly report so you can all see how those budgets are being managed and then how they're being expended. Did that help?
Yeah.
Awesome.
I'm following it because...
Yeah. It's complicated, and just so you know that, and I think I shared this at a different meeting, the reason that this came under district control is that student activities, it has been noted that that's a place for fraud, where a lot of small dollars could be exchanged in hands. There's a lot of cash flow going in and out, and there were just examples of that happening. So the district really felt strongly, or the state felt strongly that that should be under district control versus local site control outside of the books that we have. So now they're generally audited.
I think you said it there too to accentuate that. These changes came about from the state.
They did.
Yes, yes.
Whereas when we were coaching, or when we were involved in things in the past, we operated under those district processes that would kind of school and cite locals.
Yeah.
Can I apologize? I was, I had a number to see phone call I had to take there for a minute. On this particular area, I was wondering, so there's a reduction in the budget from this year to next?
Yep.
And just, I was wondering, did you cover that?
Oh, all this is is an estimate right now. So we just have this budget, this current fund, it balances itself out to zero. They may spend $1.6 million, but it may be that. We're just looking at overall, we've been seeing that there's been a little less activity, partly because of the pandemic. So that's why we went...
That makes sense. I just think we were going to have to go and cut everybody's budget by 5%.
No.
I knew we would have talked about it.
Yes. Student activities, we budget as if they're going to break even every year. They carry fund balances. We don't expect anyone to be overspending. We are monitoring those. But this is kind of just, I guess we would call this kind of the activity target that we're seeing right now. And again, partially because of the pandemic, we haven't seen as much in activity accounts as we have in past years. Yep.
I think at this point too, I'd like to thank our booster clubs too because I think they help fill the gaps that we aren't able to provide. they helped fill the gaps that we aren't able to provide.
For sure.
And so, you know, they do serve a purpose, and they are important to the success of a lot of our programs and our high schools.
But then the booster clubs, you know, just for board information, I mean, some are robust and others aren't, and other activities don't have enough parent. I'll turn to someone like a golfer, a tennis, or a speech and debate, we just really don't have as much parent. It is driven by parents, and coaches and staff have to kind of stay disconnected a bit from that, but boosters certainly have stepped in in many, many instances over many, many years, and are vital, and so. But there is, much like you stated earlier, there are lots of guidelines for booster clubs, and they also are under scrutiny, because there are times when they are not following fidelity with what they should do with the president, all of the roles need to be filled and.
Yeah. And I think too, just as a reminder, boosters are awesome, but our activities can get revenues from any number of sources. So we know that there's local businesses that really like to support a specific activity, you know, say, you know, I just use speech and debate because I see you, that you may get a donation from a local business. That's like a booster, but they're different, you know, so they're just providing a donation. It's just the boosters are more organized, they have more of a strategic plan to raise funds and then provide those back to the.
Do the booster's donations have to come to us under our donations?
So some do when they donate to us, but many times our boosters are directly buying and then just providing that as an additional service. So they're doing it really as a compliment, we just monitor it through our finance department.
So you're tracking those in-kind donations?
Correct.
Yes. But we do have in-kind donations listed on our donations, so can you explain the difference?
So they should pop up when we get those in-kind donations, but if they're doing, if they're doing direct purchasing and we're not getting the proceeds, we can only put the donations when they come to us and they're funneled through our audit. So if they pay directly to Voyager Bus, for example, we do have one group that just pays the difference between the school bus and the coach bus, that never transacts through the district, that is an agreement between Voyager Bus and the booster. So that doesn't show up because it's not technically a donation to us, they're just paying a bill and providing that service. I'm going to try to be sensitive of time, I know that there's another meeting, and so what I provided in was, again, the enrollment. I did do some tweaking because I had some sections that were based on last year instead of this year, so I'm just going to leave that there for your review. This is still under review with our building, so I just want you to be aware that we're still talking through these and walking through these, and we'll be having more conversations, but just to give you kind of that overview of where we're seeing those projected enrollments for our elementary, these are traditional K5 elementary buildings. Also, I provided a little bit of history from June of 2020 to April of 2022, what the head count enrollments were for our building. So June of 2020 was kind of just the beginning of the pandemic, then we looked at the fall of 2020, the spring of 2021, December of 2021, and then again in April of 2022. So you can just see, these are managed by Cattery Little. And you can see from June of 2020 to April of 2022, that's the percentage that you're seeing there. So in every building except for Lowell Spanish, because remember, we kept growing that program, we added more sections, so they look like they're growing, but that was because we didn't have as many grade levels, so we were growing those grade levels. Every district has lost enrollment from pre-pandemic, so you can see that as a general elementary breakdown, where we're seeing the loss of enrollment for our students. Just, it's the first column compared to the last column, so it's not a running track, it's just where were we right at the beginning of the enrollment of our pandemic, and then where are we now here in elementary? So just wanting to show you that, and again, we'll talk about this more as we get into our last round. And then again, we talked about this last time too, so you can also see, and I'm sorry, I didn't get the calculated percentages in there before I printed this, but you can also see the enrollments for our secondary buildings, our traditional secondary buildings. You can see that almost all of our buildings are showing less students now than they did again in June of 2020, but our secondaries fluctuate a little bit more than others, and depending on the time of year, when we do those enrollment counts, we always see a different amount compared to before. And then just on the last page, a slight ESR, ARP fund update since March of 2021, when we began our process. Just wanted to remind everyone that ESR 1 and the CRF funds that we received toward the beginning of the pandemic have all been expended. They were expended at the end of June 30th, 2021. ESR 2 funds are all eligibility spent by 2023, but those will all be expended by 6/30/2022. So ESR 2, which again, that other sheet that I gave last time, and I'll embed that into our whole packet, we had about approximately $8.8 million, that will all be expended now by June 30th of 2022. ESR 3, or what some folks are calling the ARP funds, we have two buckets. 80% is general spending, and then we have a 20% set aside. That 20% or $4 million is for the out-of-school year, out-of-school day, or targeted services. And we talked about that last time, where Assistant Superintendent Bonds and his TLE team is managing that fund that has a end date of September 2024, but they'll be working on things as early as this summer and then into the next summer, and potentially into the school year. I know he's exploring opportunities, there's limited opportunity to spend it during the school year, we have to do some extra work, but he's already engaged with the Department of Education to look at those options, so we're excited to hear about that. And then the traditional general, which is approximately $16 million, right now, other than that unencumbered, just shy of $2 million, will be spent during this year and then during next year. And then again, just as a reminder, this was what we had in last year. These were our four key areas on how we were spending our ESR dollars, this is what we presented to the board a year ago, making sure that we're addressing our student learning needs through our multi-point systems of support, which is TSS, making sure that we're addressing our social emotional needs, making sure that we're growing and understanding our equity framework, which we've done some investment in our equity work here this past year, and then blended learning and technology. And as a reminder, feedback from families and staff and other stakeholders have already been received, we've gone through that process. We continue to provide updates and provide and get feedback from folks to make sure we understand. Our administrators have been actively involved in understanding how we're using those funds. The reuse of some of our unspent funds were directly related to a survey we did with our building staff, so that we understood, best understood their needs coming into this next year, and just wanted to make sure that we continue that positive.
And that was with building administration rather than building staff?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Not trying to, yeah.
No, sorry. Building leaders, sorry, I misworded that. And then finally, just to cap off our budget process next steps, so remembering that we're still, unfortunately, I was hoping I wouldn't have to put this bullet in, we're still waiting for legislative finalization, we really hope that we might see an end to the legislative session, but we continue to be hopeful. I know everyone is advocating, you're getting messages from all of your organizations, including MSBA and others, saying, please write your legislators. Yep. We know the Senate is the one who's kind of holding the decision of whether or not they're going to engage, so those folks are the people that we really hope will come back to the table and renew both the education bill. Keep in mind that the sales tax exemption portion that we've been asking for to get a rebate on the cost of our building project is going to be in the bonding bill. So if that moves forward and we get a bonding bill, there would be some funds, reimbursement funds for not having to pay sales tax on the cost of materials for the project, which we currently are subject to have to pay. So we're hoping for that. We, Simone and I, will be spending tons of time together over the next 30 days to be able to put this final, more detailed budget together for you in that package to ask you to move forward. I do want to remind everybody, this is a living document. When we pass this resolution to adopt a budget, we may come to you the next month and go, huh, we need to do something completely different. So this isn't the end-all, this is where giving the community and the board and our district the information of what we know right now, here's where we think we're going to move forward. So we continue to work on that. We'll be finalizing those ESR investments, and we'll put that package together so everybody understands how we've spent, where we're moving forward, how much of that unencumbered do we have, so that in the event that we're moving forward, if that gets a little bit bigger, that's great news, if that gets a little bit smaller, we want you to be aware. So we'll work through that, and then our hope is that we will be, we will be having a committee of the whole, I believe it's June 15th is our next one, and then our hope is to have the adopted budget at our regular school board meeting, but I'm just kind of preemptively saying if things drag on and there's issues or concerns with legislation, we may ask for a special session.
So you're going to ask for a special session, and we don't have to lobby you on it, but you're reminding us to lobby our senators.
I am.
Just kidding. Actually, I do have a more of a comment, and I know we don't have time for this, but Kelly Derek-Geeber and I were at the Quality Steering Committee meeting, the Labor Management meeting, one of the questions that came up that had some discussion, and again, I'm not looking for an answer, I just wanted to make sure that board was aware, was around the floating subs that we had this year, and the pros and cons of that. So I hope that's a part of it, just continued discussion, the feedback that we were hearing at that meeting. I just wanted the other board members to know that.
And I would say we have, we've had multiple internal conversations around recruiting and retaining of all positions, but subs in particular, and that's part of the idea when we talk about still having some cushion. Is also thinking about if that need continues to persist, as it may, that that might be part of what needs to be, what it needs to be put towards. Right?
Again, I would welcome emails. I know that if anyone would like to follow up, you'll never get a no from me if you want to talk about school finance. So happy to walk through anything with folks. Looking forward to our next committee of the whole meeting, and if there's something specific, you know, we're going to do a real holistic view on that, that to provide a little bit more detail. The feedback that we got from our last meeting, we're going to try to provide that, I just didn't have time to get all that in with the steps we had taken to make sure that we can talk about the other funds tonight.
I would just add, if you do get some questions, probably all of us as a board would benefit from.
Absolutely.
Hearing the answers.
We'd love that, yes.
Thank you.
Yep, and we very much appreciate the opportunity to meet with you. It is not lost on us that this is a giant project, that's literally dozens and dozens of people who are a part of this process, and know that we are very intentional about trying to make sure the district is aware. We are trying to make sure that people are understanding of the processes. I know I've been invited to speak at some principal meetings. I welcome the opportunity to talk at different levels, if there's, you know, teachers or other groups that would like to, you know, I might maybe sit at a grocery store some night with a little table if they'd like to talk about school finance.
I'd like that idea.
But anyway, I just, you know, we're here to answer any questions that we have. Sometimes we don't have the answers to everything because there's a lot that are in flux right now as far as revenues and our estimates, but we are here to help provide as much information as we can. So appreciate the opportunity, appreciate the team that's here tonight that's done a lot of work, and, you know, I'm going to brag on Simone a lot because she has provided a lot of support for me and this team, and her team, her finance team have really come together to help build a lot of the models within our Skyward system. So just really grateful for the work that we're doing. So thanks, everybody, and I hope you have a great rest of your night.
I want to appreciate that you call our board name here up there.
You know, we text at five this morning.
Yeah.
It's our tennis shoot. Yeah, I just realized.
And we don't have to adjourn this, right? We just, we're just.
Nope, we're done.
Are we done?